Confirmation of the agenda. Due to a small technical problem, I would like to suggest that we put item four as the last item on the agenda and move the others up. So that means first agenda item with the item. The item five currently on your papers. So I'll move that.
Could we also move as another operation that I think Grant wanted to make? Or is that obvious, council? Sorry. I didn't say move.
It's okay.
Yep.
All right. So I'll move the agenda with that change. Do I have a second there? Councilor Z, all in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carry. Declarations of interest, just a reminder to councillors of the need to be aware of areas of conflict. All right, we'll move on to item five on the agenda, the film sector. And welcome Ross.
Thank you.
And there's. You wish to introduce the item?
Well, thank you. And I'd just like to show on the screen some highlights of some of the activity that's happened in and around Dunedin over the last wee while. Generally, we get quite a variety of work, but mainly with TV commercials and TV content. We have firms such as NHNZ who are doing, just developing a children's programme which they've been successful in selling overseas now. And we also get some local talent producing the movie, the zombie movie, which was premiered here last year, which highlighted local talent. And moving on to, just recently, a number of you would have seen the forklift lead that happened various locations around Dunedin, including the central carriage way and the optagon. It was a great initiative, using a lot of technical input from existing talent here in Dunedin. And I'd like to commend Brendan Buck for his work and bringing us, starting up his production company here in Dunedin. Great to see. Moving on from that, there's slides here of the well-publicised feature film Light Between Oceans, which was shot around various locations around Dunedin. These shots that are here show the main street of Port Chalmers, which was transformed into a 1920s look. As you can see, there was gravel put on the roadway and there was a lot of support locally in Port Chalmers for the activity. It also had, that particular day, there was a cruise ship in town and certainly progress with particularly how the crew and traffic control kept everybody happy and were able to do their shoot. So it was basically the main street turned into a film set. All of these demonstrate just how well Dunedin is considered to be film-friendly and without the full cooperation of a number of agencies. And also within council, Light Between Oceans just about used every regulatory area within council, from building control to planning to roading, all played their part and make sure the film happened. While it's a wee bit hard to see, there is a quote that Jared Condon, who I worked with pretty closely with Light Between Oceans, he was location manager, just how he felt and how well things went for him while working here in Dunedin. So I think, you know, in the future, we'd like to increase Dunedin's profile in the film sector and try and attract more work down here through a bit more collateral and perhaps improving websites and making it easy for productions to come here. So I'll leave you with that quote up there.
Questions councillors?
Ross, do you believe that there's more opportunity with the Light Between Oceans and getting a premiere of the movie here in Dunedin?
It's always hard in New Zealand. We're reliant on the tax breaks to some degree and that one in particular was going to be shot in Australia, but was in between there, coming up with their tax break system and it looked more attractive to have it here in New Zealand. So we were pretty fortunate to get that. We do seem to attract, every few years, we get a feature film down here. But certainly with the ease of filming here, we'd like to think we'd be able to attract more down this end of the country.
And do you think they would be looking to launch the movie here in Dunedin when it goes to main screens?
I'm not sure. I haven't discussed that with them yet.
And in between, in approach to Dunedin, has there been any discussion about leveraging tourism opportunities out of the movie and linkages with the release and locations and things like that?
We certainly have been looking at opportunities to help promote the, not only that, but other film work. We work pretty closely with the rest of the team with Tourism New Zealand. I mean, we do have filmmaking capacity in the city. I just wondered whether NHNZ and the Centre for Science Communication at the university, do they ever get involved in the feature film in terms of, you know, some of the technology they have or the expertise they have? Through the chair, particularly their, some of their staff are on contract, can get involved in some of the work, but as a company, not generally. They're usually busy enough with their own projects.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thanks, Mr Chair. Just picking up on councillor Wylie's question about the premiere of Light Between the Oceans. I just wondered whether as, Ross, as you have discussions with film companies sort of at the front end when they show interest in filming in and around Dunedin, whether that's part of the conversation that you have to try and, I suppose, just reinforce we would like not only to have them here to film on location, so to speak, but to actually have a launch of a premiere as well. So that conversation or that seed is sown at the front end before they make a commitment? Whether that's in your thinking or has been done in the past or will be done in the future?
Through the chair, I think certainly in the future. Hasn't been a conversation we've had, you know, initially right up front with any of the productions, but it's certainly something we can work on.
Just wondered, in terms of our involvement in the film industry, because there are many cities around New Zealand that are chasing for film, what do you see as our profile in Dunedin that would help grow, what would we mark as a city to the film industry?
As you can see with Jared's comments up there about being film-friendly, that's certainly one aspect we can push because some of the larger centres, there's an expression of being filmed out where a lot of the business community, you know, just sick and tired of trucks and road closures and things. We've also got our streetscapes with our historic buildings. That's a big advantage to us, particularly our nearest rival Christchurch unfortunately have lost a lot of their streetscape. And also the ease of filming around here, I've seen some commercials had four setups during one day, something like that, you just wouldn't be able to achieve in places like Auckland. So there's certainly some great advantages here that we intend to push.
So within the Dunedin team in particular, we've built a set of resources that will enable us to market what we see as our best opportunities for the film industry?
Certainly with our website, but we want to improve and create some more collateral around those features and be able to push them harder from now here.
Other questions? Would someone like to move? Thank you, councillor Noon. Seconded councillor Pete. Any discussion? If not, councillor Oldmere.
Look, I just want to pick up on councillor Wylie's questions around additional benefits that could be gained from the filming that takes place here. And I'd just note that in the North Island in Mata Marapiaako, the council negotiated with whatever major firm company was that was behind the holodeck, with a view to maintaining the sets in place. That has now become a major tourist attraction there, eclipsing some of the other traditional industries, it's bringing so many visitors in. So I suggest that it's about looking forward and seeing whether there might be any potential. Obviously, if you have to redress a main street, you're not going to be able to have that preserved. But there are some movies where the sets can be left and can be of enormous benefit to the community afterwards, well after the film's gone and well after the film's been watched. So we should, I think, keep an eye on that, depending on what film's come.
So no other debate? Of course. All in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you councillors, we'll move to item six. Is there anything you'd like to say before we open for questions?
This report's basically just an update on the business events that Enterprise Dunedin team has been doing. A lot of you have read the report, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. Firstly, the importance of business events for our city. It's not only to delegates stay longer, they spend more, and it also helps to reduce seasonality. So conferences tend to be held in winter and shoulder seasons, unless bound by university schedules. So it's certainly supporting the peaks that we're having in the tourism season and letting it flow throughout the year. The city has been experiencing very steady growth since the opening of Four So Far Stadium, also the reopening of the Dunedin Centre and Town Hall's convention facilities, and also back in 2012, the city's recognition for the need of a dedicated full-time resource and budget line to the Tourism Dunedin team to promote Dunedin as a premier business events destination. Year-end 2004, well, year-to-date, sorry, we've quoted on 23 pieces of business worth approximately $12 million to the local economy. And so far, we've confirmed 3.5 million and there's a number still in progress. We've seen particular success in the international space and you may have seen in the media and in previous presentations with the International Screen Writing Conference and also the Public Science and Communication Technology, both done in conjunction with the University of Atago. So I guess the most important takeaway is moving forward, we're having this success, but in the wake of potential convention centres opening, the International Convention Centre in Auckland, also convention centres in Wellington, Christchurch and Queenstown, is how we can remain sustainable in this market and continue to see growth, particularly because of its importance across all of our key sectors. So yeah, I think that playing in the, continuing to play in the international market alongside Tourism New Zealand with the use of the Conference Assistance Programme that's been highlighted before, is going to be the way to go because that's attracting new business into the country and into our city, rather than fighting other destinations for business that's already rotating.
Questions councillors? Councillor Wylie?
Thank you, Bree, for your report. What would you say is the average size of the conferences coming to Dunedin?
In terms of, they sort of range, we have a lot, obviously the greater number are in the smaller conferences because that takes into consideration the local stuff and the domestic stuff, so up to around the 200 mark. But we are seeing a lot of growth in that 200 to 400, 200 to 500 mark and, you know, that's where the big dollars come from as well. We're a little bit limited in terms of our infrastructure, but we certainly can do larger numbers. The Marine Mammalogist Conference was a really good example of the fact that we did manage to get 1,200 delegates into the city and join themselves for five days. However, infrastructure does have some impact by our ability to attract the larger stuff.
Okay. We've got 121 bed nights coming on in October, has that made an impact yet?
Yeah, it has actually, it's made a huge impact for us. Two weeks ago, I got a phone call from the Rural National Health Conference and that was actually happening at the time in another destination and they decided midway during the conference, do you think we could take this to Dunedin next year? And it basically, they rang to say, are you going to be able to take accommodation wise in March of 2016? And thankfully, Seneca Hotels were able to take a chunk, but to be able to just like that tell them they had an additional 120 bed nights, it took us up to the magic number that we needed. So otherwise, we would have had to try and convince them to spread across perhaps five or six hotels as opposed to two or three. So instantly, they just felt a lot more confident about bringing larger numbers.
That's cool, that's really good. And when we look at the conferences, do you think Dunedin people attending these conferences could, you know, really talk to you before going in some cases and, you know, as they go to these conferences and see where they could, say, be raving fans for the city and say, look, we want this conference to come to Dunedin next time?
Absolutely. And that's a big part of what our marketing is all about, is we want to find these ambassadors that are here in the city. So working with our tertiary institutions, with the business community, those sorts of people that are going offshore to international conferences to be able to say, we want to host it in Dunedin. And whilst, you know, we're narrowly by ourselves, we wouldn't have the resource to be able to pursue that, we work in conjunction with Tourism New Zealand and their Conference Assistance Programme. And they basically fully fund the process, trying to assist someone to bring an international conference to Dunedin. So they'll pay for a financial feasibility study to make sure that the numbers stack up for the host city. They will pay for all the bid documentation, presentations, they will even pay for travel expenses to send that particular ambassador over to say present to an international society or to an international conference overseas. And then not, it doesn't just stop there, it also moves into post-win marketing strategies as well. So, you know, if Dunedin's been lucky enough to win a conference, that might usually go to North America, that we've got strategies in place to make sure that we actually get the number of delegates over here that we want.
Thank you.
Councillor Pete?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just on slide three, you referred to an opportunity coming up for a big international women's travel writers' conference in Dunedin, which would be a massive bridge for our marketing support for the city. And I'm just wondering how you're planning to pitch that at Boston in March 16?
Well, actually, my colleague's over there at the moment and we did just find out that we were unsuccessful. So, which is, it's a real shame, but at the same time, we sent over our Sharon Loplin, our PR communications person within the team, and also representative of Tourism New Zealand. And the beauty of that conference is even though we might not be getting these 300 travel writers here, the two of them have been over there networking with all of these travel writers and have actually created a number of opportunities to bring them over individually in conjunction with Tourism New Zealand's international media programme. So yes, while we don't necessarily get the direct benefit, there still has been that huge flow-on effect. So to be honest, we're very lucky, one of three destinations chosen as finalists against two other US cities. So we were over there certainly pushing the Dunedin and the New Zealand message as a whole.
Right. Who was the successful?
California. Irvine, California.
Irvine?
Haven't been here myself, sorry. I just have your thoughts on what my thoughts are there.
Councillor Lord?
Hi, yeah. Excuse me, I have a question, but through the flights in and out of Wellington, three-day conferences in Wellington, which means we're deep here at T E seven, get up there at five to eight, three, four days of conference with only two nights, does, is Dunedin disadvantaged in that sort of three-day conference? You may have just been three nights here, or is the flight suitable that you can't get in and expect three days but only two hotel nights? Obviously it's driving.
Domestically, I guess it can be a challenge outside of the main centres. In some instances, you could look at it as a positive because they do have to come down the day before, so we do get that additional room night. But yeah, it's certainly about frequency. In the international space, it doesn't matter so much because they're flying here and what's an extra couple of hours, what's they're flying all the way here because they're doing that in a lot of other countries. But obviously, you know, we want to, and this is why business events is important and that particularly when it's trying to combat seasonality is because if we can increase our capacity, then this sector can help maintain it throughout the non-traditional high seasons.
I fully understand that it's a bonus for us, but it may be.
Absolutely. And it is something that we do come up against, but I guess we do have, you know, potentially, well, I think the third direct flight from Auckland is supposed to be coming back on this month. And then we do have three from Wellington and also a number from Christchurch.
Through you, Mr Chair. We also know that through the data that we've been gathering, Dunedin is relatively well-placed in terms of its cost per delegate and so whilst the fares and the cost of additional accommodation to get here may be a factor, overall, our conferencing costs are in line, if not some of the best in the country.
Councillor Z?
It seems to me there's a bit of conflict when you've got Tourism New Zealand working with Safer Auckland, as you've mentioned in your paper with the ambassadors. What influence do they have, Tourism New Zealand, on where a conference may go? For example, you know, we can work with Tourism New Zealand and we may clearly be the best option with regards to a conference or whatever, or an event. But they would be also working with other cities as well. So how does that work?
Actually, you'd be surprised, they don't have much of an influence. They, that's the idea of creating these ambassadors, because if an ambassador goes to Tourism New Zealand and they want to do it for a particular region, Tourism New Zealand don't get into whether they think another region is a better fit. And the idea around the international stuff is we're targeting the sorts of business that we specialise in our city. So for example, the health sciences, you know, medical and health technology, the ICT, all of those sorts of things that we specialise in therefore is, I guess, more of a good fit for the particular conference. But yeah, Tourism New Zealand are the support mechanism, they're not the driver behind the conferences.
Okay, so they won't have an influence of where an event or a conference may take place?
Absolutely not.
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions councillors? Councillor Wylie?
Sorry, just following up on the conference in Boston, you made a comment to us earlier today that there was a reason why we lost out on that with the US market?
Yeah, well, the feedback from Sharon was there was actually a number of people there that didn't hold passports, so, you know, that's.
It's a travel writer or a blogger.
So it wasn't just travel writers, so it's travel writers, travel bloggers and travel influencers, so, yeah. I mean, I'd like to say that was absolutely the only reason that we didn't win, but until we get a report from the conference and from the conveners, I don't get any more information at this stage.
Someone like to move the resolutions? Thank you councillor Pete. Seconded. Councillor Lord? Any discussion?
I'd just, yeah, I'd just like to congratulate Bree and the team for pursuing this area because I think it's a very important area for us. I mean, the multiplier effect from a conference is fantastic. And I was very pleased to see this report, thank you very much for it. And, you know, I don't feel too down about missing out on that one. The fact that we had, you know, we were up against two American venues was something. The fact that we got there as a coup to be a finalist, I think, and it shows just what potential we have. We have a city here with venues, amazing set of venues, both for conferences and events. And I'm glad to see we're putting the effort into attracting conferences.
Sometimes in the international space, you do bid to lose the first time around as well, but then next time, the following year when you put your bid in, you're instantly recognised. So, you know, we certainly, once we lose one, we don't stop and like, we just bid for the next one.
Any other speakers? If not, I'll put the resolution. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Councillors, we'll now move back to item four, hopefully the technological problem will be solved. So for this item, we're joined by Cara Bradley, who's the coordinator for the Shanghai China Project. And for councillors who have not met, Hua Jang, who has joined the Enterprise Dunedin team as the Project China Manager. How would you like to have a few words to start?
Thank you. Good afternoon. John, Hua and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to this update report. The tabled report is a review of activities that have taken place and what was expected over the next 12 months. We're happy to take questions throughout and if you're interested in looking into the project in more detail, we're happy to meet you outside this presentation. Initiated from the Dunedin Economic Development Strategy, Project China is convened by the chamber and supported now by a full-time Project China Manager through Enterprise Dunedin. This is a collaborative project with many contributors responsible for its successes. The project's efforts line promoting our city's tourism, trade, technology, education and in addition, environmental investment opportunities, while supporting and being supported by cultural and civic activities. The project is about process, presence, partnership, patience and perseverance. The Chinese have been doing business in a certain manner for thousands of years. The process entails establishing relationships, signing and committing to high-level agreements, establishing work plans, followed by outcomes. The next slide. With China, there is a need to develop deeper relationships than would be expected in New Zealand or the Western world. This reflects the need to form trust before business negotiations take place, for guanxi to be established. If I could please ask Hua to perhaps elaborate on the meaning of guanxi?
I think guanxi, in the simple words, is a special relationship, but it's more complicated than a static relationship. It will be involved in like social status and social network and some money issues as well. I think guanxi is a research topic for lots of universities. It is far complicated than just a normal static relationship. Yeah, that's a simple, basic.
Thank you.
Dunedin's relationships with China are significant and offer the envy of others nationally and even internationally. A merely delegation is a significant part of the strategy. A merrily delegation is a significant part of the strategy designed to enhance these growing relationships. Collaboration with key sectors from across the city helps maximise Denedin's growing presence in the China market. We expect to see further growth in the breadth and depth of both civic and business-level commitment. Agreements. Our relationships are established, once relationships are established, leaders of intention, memorandums of understanding or high-level agreements are signed. These form, this form of partnership shows a commitment to do business together. On the eleventh of March, Mayor Cowell and Vice-Meier Wang signed the Denedin-Chengdao Friendly City Agreement. And then during the October visit, Enterprise Denedin and the Shanghai Education Commission signed a strategic education agreement, the first of its kind for both Denedin and Shanghai. This document will lead the way with its entire sister-city education agreements. Work plans. Following the signing of agreements, work plans between the parties are developed to see through the intent of the agreement. This year, work plans will be developed with the Chengdao Bureau of Commerce, the Chengdao Municipal Tourism Administration, the Shanghai Tourism Bureau and the Shanghai Education Commission. So now it is about strengthening and building and embracing these work plans, outcomes. Many of the successes of Project China are difficult to discuss in public arenas, given their commercial sensitivity. However, looking back over the last twelve months, the two most significant outcomes of Project China include the merrily delegation to mark the celebrations of the twentieth anniversary of the Denedin-Shanghai sister-city relationship, which included representation from council, Naitahu, which was a first, the Denedin-Shanghai Association, the Chamber, the university, the Polytech and four high schools, all of whom met with their counterparts with existing opportunities where further progress and new opportunities were established. Last week, as I have just mentioned, the Chengdao civic-led visit by Vice-Meier Wang to Denedin saw the signing of the official Friendly City Agreement. The Denedin delegation representing civic investment, education, tourism, trade and tech sector interests is planned to visit predominantly Shanghai and Chengdao in May this year. The major objectives of the trip are as follows: to meet the newly-appointed Consul General to Shanghai, to introduce our newly-appointed Project China Manager to market, initiate discussions on any possible merril visit to China later this year, to develop the mentioned work plans, to introduce Professor Keith Hunter, pro-Vice-Chancellor of Sciences, University of Otago, an internationally renowned oceanographer, to Ocean University China and to tech sector contacts, to progress and initiate further opportunities for collaborations in areas including but not limited to drug cancers, diagnostics and physics, to meet the newly-appointed Chairman of the Shanghai Chamber of Commerce, to plan celebrations for the twentieth anniversary of the Chamber relationship, and to explore opportunities for a business-led delegation later this year. In the past two years, the relationship between Denedin and China has grown rapidly. The council, chamber, grove Denedin partners, project partners, companies and institutions across Denedin are putting resources into this relationship, and we are committed to continual improvement. Total trade between New Zealand and China reached just under fifteen billion New Zealand dollars in 2012, with China now New Zealand's top export destination. The government estimates that this will reach twenty billion this year. Project China aligns with a strong mandate from the government to boost New Zealand's export opportunities, as it continues to identify and build opportunities for Denedin in the high, in the high-value and tradable sectors.
Thank you, councillor Lord?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. John, I was thinking about the economic strategy, economic development strategy, and I'm thinking about the ten thousand extra jobs goal, and I had two questions. The first one is, how's that going? Yeah, got a number in you?
Uh, look, the latest measure we've seen is, in the twelve months to December last year, we grew twelve hundred and sixty positions in the city, full-time equivalent positions.
Okay, thank you. And the other question is, when I looked at, um, last week I attended a presentation on education, and I looked at the figures for economic student growth throughout the country, and Denedin was one of the two areas in the country that had dropped, and I'm just wondering, do you think we've got the balance right between what we've put into say tourism, what we've put into Project China, and what we've put into gaining extra students as well?
Yeah, the interesting thing about Project China is it encompasses all of those sector groups. So whilst we have specialist managers for China and education as part of the growth Denedin partnership commitment, they also cross over a lot in the work that they're doing. In the wider sense, our marketing and tourism activities are also very squarely looking at China, which is a growth market, and how we might better capture more of that market into Denedin. We're seeing that China's second highest tourism market now for the country, and we're set to see that continue to grow exponentially, so a lot of our strategy is working out, how do we attract on balance, you know, educational tourist visitors and also the trade, general trade that we're working on with China.
Thank you. Any other questions? councillor Wyler?
Well, councillor Lord took away one of my questions on tourism, but Cara, last week, I attended a, through Giggatown, was the Alcatel-Lucent were in town. And one of the interesting things that came out of that was, in Asia, there's a lot of companies that really are trying to get market traction and develop their products. And part of that was that with Denedin and the gig speed coming to development, they were looking at Denedin as a great place to come and potentially launch or validate their products. Do you see opportunities in that area, obviously with the university and the sector that way, but communicating that to the market in China?
If I could perhaps send that question to John?
Yes, so John, one of the things we know about the China market is they're very hungry for technology advantage, and our visits up to higher and Chengdao have indicated that commitment. So, Fisher and Paikal that is here, their research and design capability within Denedin City is now not just research and design for Fisher and Paikal product, it is for all product across the higher range. And that means we've got worldwide exposure to some of our design that's designed here locally. And that's just one example, one public example of a lot of the opportunities we're seeing from Denedin. And having Giggatown win for the city would just enable us to get some of that technology into the China and rest of the world market even quicker.
councillor Pete?
Thank you, I just, I wanted, in light of the references to marine research and collaboration, that might be an opportunity for the city and cities and universities in China, I wondered if there was anything more to report?
Well, that's a really exciting piece of work. We don't begin to understand it, I don't think, yet in terms of what China would class as their blue economy. So that's the whole marine sector, and Chengdao is the home of marine for China in terms of research and capability that they have there now. And the government, Chinese government pour a lot of money into looking at how they can protect their marine wildlife and how they can, I guess, use that for world advantage. And they're very keen to link with Otago University and obviously our city in terms of where we might be able to collaborate on research projects that have mutual benefit. I don't for a moment begin to try to understand the science behind that, but from what I understand, we have very similar climatic conditions and our oceans are very similar, so the research that would be done here would have application back into the China coastline as well. It's a very exciting space.
And apart from the academic aspects, which are important, obviously, the university's had aspirations to develop a teaching aquarium, somewhere like the Monterey one. And is that something that is still up for discussion, or is it something you don't know about?
Look, I think that's something that the university is obviously part of their plans to work on, and as a city, we'd actively work on them with any relationships we had worldwide, if that involved China, that would be a pretty exciting proposition for our city.
Any other questions councillors? Not, would someone like to move the recommendations? councillor Bezette? Seconded, councillor Hall. Debate? If there is none, I'll put the recommendation. All in favour? Against? Carry. That brings us to the last item on our agenda, items for consideration by the chair. Are there any items that you would like considered? councillor Hawkins?
Um, thanks, Mr Chairman, and picking up on councillor Lord's point around quantifying our overarching objectives for the Economic Development Strategy, ten thousand new jobs and a rise in the average income of ten thousand dollars. These targets are included often as background to these individual reports, but are reported on or measured against particularly often, it would seem, in a more formal capacity. So I wonder if, because, you know, we don't want to get to 2023 before we realise whether these may or may not need changing, and the best way of knowing whether they need changing is to report on them more often. So, if we could get a report back on that, on progress on both of those targets and perhaps a framework for more regular reporting on them, I'd appreciate that.
No other? In that case, I shall declare this meeting closed, and we'll take a short break before the meeting, councillor.